Well, we'll call this meeting to order. November 6th, 2023, City Council Meeting, City of Friendswood. We have a quorum. I'd like to invite up Pastor Mike Cervantes from New Hope Church to say our invocation. So please stand. Once he's done, is done praying, we'll continue standing, say the pledges, and then we'll continue on.
I'd like to invite you to pray with me. Heavenly Father, I thank you, God, for just your mercy and your grace in our community. I thank you, God, that in times of change, God, that you always provide leadership, as today we'll demonstrate, Father. I thank you, God, that even in shifting leadership, Father, you always continue to guide us. I'm reminded in Proverbs 3:5 through 6, it says, "If we trust in you, that you'll guide our steps; if we acknowledge you, you'll guide our steps." May we continue as a city, just continue to trust in you. Put all of our trust in you, put you first as you guide our steps, Lord. We're thankful for you. Thank you, thank you, God, for the transition. I thank you for the service of Chief Wieners, and I thank you, God, for Chief Rogers, who's coming in, Father. May you bless him, give him wisdom and courage in all the decisions he makes. And, God, may you just be here and dwell here. I thank you for our police officers and our city leaders, God. May you bless them, may you bless this space and be with us. It's in Jesus' name we all say, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Great job. All right. Moving on to item four, which is council for the day. This is one of our favorite council meetings of the entire year, when second graders come up, come in and take over. We started doing this back in 2018, so this is the fifth year that we've been doing it. We did it for a number of reasons. We want, we want these kids to understand a little bit more about how our government works. We want to give them a little bit of understanding about the value of community service. And I want you all to know that all of us up here, we're all volunteers. You know, we're the City Council of City of Friendswood, but we don't get paid. We're volunteer to do this. So that's a little bit about volunteerism that is a very important part of Friendswood, always has been. So we're also here to foster leadership development. You know, look around the room. These second graders, look for them in the future, because these will be future leaders here in Friendswood. They will continue to step up and take on these kinds of roles, and we'll see them in the future. We also like to support our school districts' character education program. So with that, I'm going to start with the city secretary and bring these young folks up here. Before I do anything more, though, I want to recognize Principal Buffy Johnson. Thank you, Principal, for being with us all five years. You've been a stalwart, and we love having you. And thanks again for kicking off this year's go-around, because, you know, Wedgewood, very important to the community, and we're glad that you're leading off this year. So first off, city secretary, Charlotte Crochet. And Charlotte's teacher is Avery Long. Raise your hand, Avery.
Ms. Nettles.
Well, yeah, but Charlotte.
I made them.
Sorry, Ms. Nettles. Okay, while they're taking that picture, council member position six is Robert Lively, and his teacher is Avery Long. All right, yes. You owe me lunch now.
I do.
Council member position five is Sarah Pham, and Sarah's teacher is Grace Mayo? Mayo? Mayo! All right, come on up. Don't forget your script. Don't show them the candy yet.
Our big perk.
Next, council member position four is Mason Daigle, and also Ms. Mayo.
All right, Mason. Come on over and have you a seat, bud.
Okay.
Push you up close.
Next person, our mayor, is Kara David, and that is Ms. Nettles, right?
Miss Long. Three, two.
No?
That's from my one that were switched.
It's two launches.
Sorry about that, Ms. Long. All right, next, council member position three, Sebastian Brown. Ms. Nettles? Council member position two is going to be Finley Taylor and Amanda Brunker. Council member position one, Michaela Cardwell. City Attorney, Kai Sanchez. Leslie Chavez. All right. And the hardest job of all, city manager, Anna Deering. Hey, Mayor, I'm going to turn it over to you. Kara, go ahead, speak into the microphone so everybody can hear you guys.
Wait, what do I say? Oh.
Everybody grab your script.
I wonder that all the time.
Grab your script. Everybody have their script?
Yes.
I want you to speak for Kara into the microphone, okay?
It says city attorney first. No, it says city attorney. Oh, I mean, city manager. Has our city attorney approved the wording of the proposed proclamation?
Okay, you start, ma'am.
Mayor and council, tonight at 4:00, a proposed proclamation declaring November 6th, Wedgewood Elementary Day in Friendswood, Texas. As you know, Wedgewood Elementary is a part of the Clear Creek and Pennant School District and is an exemplary campus and a source of pride for our community. Has our city attorney approved the wording of the proposed proclamation?
Yes, Mayor, I have drafted the wording of the proposed proclamation and is in line Vision statement of the City of Friendswood.
Will the city secretary please read the motion on the table? Wait, no, no. Will the city secretary please read the city's vicious statement for the record?
The City of Friendswood has the following statement as its vision to gather rebuild our future and friendly place to live, work, play, learn, and worship.
Thank you. I'll now read the proposed proclamation. This proposed proclamation of City of Friendswood, Texas, declares November 6th, Wedgewood Elementary Day in the City of Friendswood, Texas. It is now time to take a vote. Do I have a motion accepting the proposed proclamation?
Is it my turn?
I move that we accept the proposed proclamation as presented.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, accepting the proposed proclamation. Is there any discussion?
At Wedgewood Elementary, we pledge to be kids with character, and we pledge to be bucket fillers.
At Wedgewood Elementary, we will be honest, reliable, and worthy of trust.
We'll be responsible, fair, doing what we must.
At Wedgewood Elementary, with our words and actions, we wish that we care.
We'll be good citizens and do our share.
At Wedgewood, we respect ourselves and others too.
We respect the best in all we do.
Will the city secretary please leave the motion on the table?
We have a motion by council member Michaela. Cardwell, and a second from council member Finley Taylor, to accept a proposed proclamation of the City of Friendswood, Texas, declaring November 6th, 2023, as Wedgewood Elementary Day in the City of Friendswood, Texas.
We have a motion and a second, accepting the proposed proclamation. All in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand.
Motion passes seven to zero. Congratulations, Wedgewood Elementary School, with there being no other business. I adjourn this council for a day meeting. Mayor, former, reassess the city council regular meeting for 10 minutes and invite the students, teachers, families, and friends to partake in the rehearsals of cookies and punch in the reception area.
Well, that was a great job. You know, if I could just get my council to read off of a script, we'd be in and out of here in about 15 minutes, but they go off-script all the time. So, hey, I'd like to invite you all to the foyer, unless we need to take any more pictures. Anybody else? Come on up, parents, take a picture. Have at it.
Would you take my picture with her? You did a great job.
Thank you.
Ready?
Gotta look at this, look what I found.
Great job, great job.
I want a picture with him, I want a picture with him. You did a good job. You did me tonight.
Great job.
Secret for you. Getting started, getting great. Well done. Great job. There you go.
Good job.
I get this. And I get a jolly right here.
Thanks, Grace.
I got a secret cake.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, she gave me a...
Thank you, guys. Yeah. Don't forget, don't forget to take your nameplate. Get to keep that. Yeah. Sorry, I messed up. I told them, the mayor, to take it away, and she wasn't the first to speak.
It wasn't...
Oh, oh, oh.
What?
Yeah. Yeah, better. Yeah, I get it. Well, that's all right. Ah, that's all right. We all, hey, if it was perfect, it wouldn't be blind. It wouldn't be...
Yeah.
Let's go out.
Wedgewood parents, just a reminder, we have a photo under the silver logo in the lobby.
All right.
And then for Ms. Brunker.
Can I take a picture with you?
Good job.
Can I take a picture with you?
You're living the dream. Thanks, Mike. You didn't know we'd be calling you so soon. When was that? Home Pillage, I saw you, and you said sorry. Someone had bumped into you. They told, they said, well, I'm glad you could squeeze us in, because right after, right after I saw you, the city secretary goes, hey, we don't have a pastor for Monday night. And I said, Mike Cervantes. So glad. Been lifting? Chief! Hey, Mo, how are you, man? Great to see you. How are you doing? Good, good. How's the new chief? Haven't lifted your shades yet? One whole day. Hey, Pat? Sure. What do I need to do? I'm sorry for this communication on there.
That's okay.
Oh, thank you, ma'am.
You're more than welcome.
Should I hang on to this? Okay. Okay.
But I would.
It's a check. Okay, I got, I understand now. I get it. Well, I'm glad that we did that.
They loved it.
Did they really? I was wondering if, hey, I think I'm standing in the way of these people getting out of here, but, well, it was a lot of fun. I'm going to take my stuff.
Really bizarre, and we'll never forget it. She needed to go show her...
Oh, yeah, that was great. That was great. Well, we're...
It was fun. I wanted to come in and see the kids.
Oh, yeah, come on. We're doing it next month, too. We're doing a flying elementary next month.
Oh, yeah?
Hey, good job. Good job.
Thank you.
Let me see here. I'm sorry. Oh, let's see.
Please, please work. Please, please work. Okay, that worked. Yes, yeah.
Everybody's on this podium?
Yes.
We're on, he's got his there.
You need me to?
I forgot it, sir.
Easy, I teach out.
You hope not.
I forgot it, sir.
You need me to?
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 I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to? I forgot it, sir. You need me to?
All right, all right. It works. If council will allow, I'd like to move item 10D up and handle this business item. Consider ratifying and concurring with the city manager's appointment of Josh Rogers to the position of Chief of Police. Mr. City Manager.
Mayor and council, as you know, last month I announced the retirement of longtime Police Chief Robert Wieners. It was not a question in my mind who would take Chief Wieners' place as Chief of Police. Obviously, a man of Bob's pedigree is not easily replaceable, but Josh Rogers has been an outstanding police officer and has been with our organization nearly 24, 25 years. He's served in every role and every position at the Police Department, and I couldn't think of a better person to take on the leadership role of the department. So with that, I recommend the appointment of Josh Rogers as Police Chief, and I believe Judge Walz is here to swear him in. Judge?
Do you want us to vote on it first, or do you want us to swear him in and then vote and hope that he...
Well, let's go ahead and take a vote first.
Can I get a motion on item 10D?
I so move.
I second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor?
All right.
And after the swearing in, Chief Rogers would like to say a few words, if that's okay.
He is welcome to. Okay, Judge, do your best. Did you write him? You see that for me? I, Josh Rogers.
Aye, Josh Rogers.
solemnly swear.
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
At the office of Chief of Police of the City of Friendswood.
Of the office of Chief of Police of the City of Friendswood.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Check, declare, and defend.
Protect.
Good.
Protect and defend.
Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
United States, no disrespect.
Of the United States, no disrespect.
Charter and the ordinance.
The charter and ordinance.
Floor is yours, Chief.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to thank you all for your support in concurring with our city manager on my appointment to Chief of Police. I know that in the history of the Police Department, this doesn't happen very often. One could say that you all do a great job in selecting the person to lead the Police Department. That is definitely true. What it really says is that we have a very stable, elected group of officials who allows our leaders to do their job, and you all support the position. I want you all to know I do not take that for granted, and we do not have to look very far around to see that the stable government is not, you know, is very unique to our city. This matters and factors into our city's success, and specifically, the Police Department's success. I am honored, thankful, and blessed that Chief Wieners can transfer the leadership over to me. This is not how we have drew it up for sure when we spoke of the transition, I can promise you. But please understand, we have worked side by side for the last 24-plus years. We have been building a legacy for a while, and I am honored I can carry on that legacy. Issues will be big to fill, and I understand that. And I've been developing my own style of leadership by working for him and working for one of the greatest leaders and learning from him all the way. Please understand, we will not be able to lower the crime rate much more than it is. Hopefully, we'll be judged on that. No, in all seriousness, I understand, you know, that I'll be facing some unique challenges as we move forward. Some of those weren't present, you know, 24 years ago when Chief started. I still have plenty of work to do. I want to thank my family, my wife Debbie, my daughter Madison, son Jacob, and my parents, my brother and sister. Debbie and my children have sacrificed the most through this journey, and we understand it is not going to get any easier as we continue. However, I am surrounded in this room with plenty of friends. I think that's a testament of what's behind me. I'm surrounded by staff of over 100 employees now who will have and will continue to support me. Some have even came back that were ex-employees to witness this moment. I thank them all for that. With your support, Council, and everyone in this room, we will continue to build the best Police Department around. In closing, thank you, Mayor, Council, and Murad for trusting in me to fill these big shoes. You will not be let down. Thank you all.
Before we head out?
Sure. I'm gonna do this meeting first.
Or down here.
Wait around. Hey, those stars look good. Appreciate it.
And Murad, if you want to step in as well. All right, ready? Three, two, one. All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Best of luck. I hope we got some officers out on the streets right now. It's great to see this great turnout, though.
Absolutely.
It speaks volumes about the man that we just swore in, Josh, to have so many people here rallying around. So, you know, if those kids didn't finish off all the cookies and punch out there. Go for it. Yeah, Jimmy Rogers.
Police Power Biscuits. Police Power Biscuits.
Yeah, and thank all of you for what you do for Friendswood.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, oh, I did not either.
It's gonna feel really empty in here.
Yeah, really. All right, well, while they're evacuating, we can move on to item five, Council Comments and Reports. I'll lead off on Council Comments while there's a little bit of a hubbub going on still. Couple of things, this week is Veterans Day. Saturday is Veterans Day, so please thank a veteran. Can you see one? There's a really old one there, out there in the lobby, Jim Hill. You know, you can ask him about the Spanish-American War.
Oh, that was the Revolutionary War.
Nah, he's not that old. And last week, we had Hope Village Fashion Show, which is a fundraiser for Hope Village. If you don't know what Hope Village is, that's a community that houses residents who, adults that have learning disabilities, and they take care of those folks over there. And it was a great event, great turnout. A lot of people in this room were there, so I don't have to tell you too much about it. But our own James Tony was probably, he owned the catwalk out there that day. He was, he's a fashionista. So, thank you for contributing your time, James Tony. Were you on the clock when you were doing that, or did you just... If you were, you're the only person getting paid there. All right. Councilmember Aaron Wirth.
So I'd just like to take this opportunity to honor and express gratitudes toward Police Chief Wieners. He wasn't just a respected figure in this city, but he was also a dear friend to me. I don't know if I'd be a dear friend to him, but he was a dear friend to me. And he gave 20 years of his life, over 20 years, 24, to this city. Like many others in our city, I appreciate his consistent efforts to always prioritize the safety, heritage, and well-being of this city. I know it wasn't always easy, and there was some challenges that he faced and probably some tough conversations, but he always made sure what he was doing was best for this city. He kept this place among one of the safest places in this nation, and I know that Officer Rogers will continue that legacy. His leadership led our community to receive several accolades and awards as one of the safest cities for several years. The depth of my gratitude of his dedication and leadership knows no bounds. I'd also like to extend a thanks to Susan and his family for sharing him with us all these years while he and his team worked tirelessly to keep us all safe. Lastly, I want to congratulate Deputy Chief Rogers on his well-deserved promotion to Police Chief. I'm excited to see him lead us into the next generation with the best police force in the best city, and I hope everybody will keep Police Chief Wieners in their prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Aaron, I'm sorry, Matranga, I was looking right at you.
Right.
Do you have anything?
Well, I've got a couple of things, but first, well said, Brent. I don't think I can add much to that other than adding my recognition and thanks for everything that Chief Wieners has done for this city. It just goes on and on. Councilmember Hanks is not here tonight, so she asked me to pass along a couple of things, and she's got quite a few things to pass along. So just give me, I will work through it. She's got a lot to say tonight. Keep Friendswood Beautiful's Fall Hall is scheduled for this coming Saturday, November 11th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The Heritage Gardeners Christmas Homes Tour and Market is scheduled for November 18th and 19th. Tickets are available to the tour from Heritage Gardeners members and the Chamber of Commerce. Keep Friendswood Beautiful is assisting this year with the home tours, and I think anybody that's been to that, it's a great event. Next is Santa in the Park will occur before our next meeting, and the Lighted Christmas Trail. It's all scheduled for December 2nd in Stevenson Park. The last, getting towards the end here, KFB, Keep Friendswood Beautiful, had their annual retreat to discuss their 2023 accomplishments and developed their new goals for next year. More to come. And for myself personally, it seems like it's a long time ago, but I wanted to thank all of our first responders that attended the National Night Out for West Ranch that I attended. It was good to see everybody there, gave the residents of West Ranch an opportunity to meet some of our first responders that do such a great job. That's it. Thank you.
Oh, I just want to quickly echo what Councilman Aaron Wirth said, and I want to thank Chief Wieners for being a good friend to me and mentoring me, especially in this job, and becoming more aware of what our police do for us each and every day. I also would like to mention, and you mentioned it a little earlier, about Veterans Day coming up. The Senior Activity Center will be hosting a Veterans Day program. I believe that's September the 9th, from 11:00 to 1:00?
November 9th, but yes.
I mean, November 9th, from 11:00 to 1:00. I'm a month behind, but that's it. Thanks.
And I think the Lighted Christmas Trail starts on Thanksgiving night, right? No? Doesn't start that early?
Earlier.
Starts earlier than that?
Yes, this first year, we moved it up early.
Okay.
It's 17.
Seventeen, okay.
But the Santa in the park is...
Coming up really soon.
It's never too early to start celebrating Christmas in the holiday season, so.
Councilmember Branson?
Not to be redundant, but Barrett, you did a lovely job, Chief, and he's gonna be missed. Josh is right, he's got some pretty big shoes to fill, and Ron Cox did a good job selecting him. That was a big job, and I know it was tough when he had to replace Chief Stout, so that was a biggie. I too wanted to mention Veterans Day this week. I want to thank our veterans for their service. I want to congratulate Lisa Camp, if she's here in the room, her first day on the job. Welcome. And I'd also like to let y'all know about an event that's a Rotary and Friendswood Education Foundation project, a joint project called 12 by 12. There's some artworks to be going up in the library tomorrow evening, and if you want to go by and look in the community room, there's gonna be art that you can purchase. You have to bid on it first, but all the proceeds go to the Education Foundation, so it's a great fundraising opportunity here in our community. It's by two of our nonprofit organizations that get together on that. I did want to mention for our Harris County residents, there is an item on your ballot regarding HGAC. They're looking at the composition of that board, and it's on the ballot for Houston or Harris County residents and the City of Houston to vote on that. And if you need any information on that, you're welcome to grab me after the speaking. I'd be happy to tell you what I do know about that. And then last but not least, CDC is continuing to work on their, they've been pulling together FDFA and the Chamber working together and FDEDC on a joint message, and they've just now finally finished up their joint messaging. They'll have a report for us in January. But what they're doing is they're trying to pull together those groups in our community that have an interest in economic development and try to create a unified approach so that we're out trying to, I hate to say recruit or solicit, but encourage people to do business here in Friendswood or to retain businesses here in Friendswood, because during COVID, we saw a lot of businesses really suffer. They're trying to help with that. So it's a multifaceted approach to continuing our economic development. So they'll have a report for us in January as they continue, but they are gonna have a consistent message, and they've just finalized that. So I just want to give y'all a quick little update on that. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you. Councilmember Rocky?
Yes, Brent, nice words, and I, you know, probably the best praise I ever got in this job was early on. I had to work, Bob and I worked an issue together, and later he told me I was a good man in a fight. And I thought that, that sounded really pretty good. Couple of other things, the Library Gala was a little while back, but we've estimated our final costs or our final revenue, and we're gonna probably clear around $50,000, and that's gonna go into a fund for future programs for the library. I also got, Paul Marx and I got an opportunity to tour some Girl Scouts of one of our museums, of which Mike's granddaughters were among them, and they were a very good bunch. And let's see, The Rabbit Trap in the Barn and The Chamber Pots were the hits, so. And the last thing is, if none of you have attended the Purple Box Theater, we have a terrific live theater in town, and I have been cast in another play. Fortunately for all of you, I have a very small role.
Well, thank you, and congratulations, Chief Camp. We're glad that you're here. And with her hiring, Brian Mansfield moved up to our Emergency Management Director, Emergency Services Director, let me get this right. And Brian Holmes is now our Fire Marshal. Lisa Camp is the Chief for EMS, so it's a whole hierarchy going on over there, a little fiefdom.
And Mayor, related to that, there's an agenda item, second reading of that ordinance this evening, but there will be a pending ceremony for all those positions in December. We haven't set the date just yet.
Great. Okay, moving on, item six is public comment. Let me read this. "In order to comply with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council may not deliberate any item not listed on the agenda. As such, the City Council will listen to public comment and may, one, refer the item to City management for further action, or, two, direct staff for the placement of said item on a future agenda. During public comment, public shall comply with rules of decorum." I have one card here. Mr. Gary Vanderwick? Floor is yours, sir. How did you pronounce that?
Vanderweal.
Vanderweal?
It's Dutch, it's...
Oh, okay. It does say Vanderweal.
Yes.
Okay.
So I've just come today. My wife and I recently opened a small business. We have a boutique coffee trailer. We've been doing events. We've been fortunate to do some events, providing coffee in the mornings for teachers at schools. We sought to find a location to serve and operate in Friendswood, and it's not in line with the city ordinances. So we wanted to come and put a comment in saying that we would like to look at the ordinances or see if there is some solution for us to be able to operate within the city. We've discussed options with neighboring cities. Pearland is similar to Friendswood. Lake City has some slightly different rules, but we wanted to put in front of the council to see if it'd be possible for us to find a solution to operating within the city or not.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, no more cards. I assume nobody else wanted to speak. Moving on to item seven, and this is a work session topic, so I'll remind Council that we use our workshop rules here. We have relaxed rules during workshops where you don't need to get my permission to speak. Just if you have a question for Samantha Heratose, now, don't talk on top of each other, but, you know, respectfully, you can ask your question. Workshop rules. And since you're coming up to talk about drainage, I want to point out that Melissa Washington is here from the General Land Office. Thank you, Melissa. She has been so great working with us on a lot of the funding that you're gonna be talking about. So, over to you, our Drainage Czar, Samantha Heratose.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Mayor Mike said, I'm Samantha Heratose, Deputy Director of Engineering, and I'm gonna give an overview of several of the drainage projects and efforts that we have ongoing. I can never remember how to work this. Oh, tell you, okay. Okay. So, this map has been up before, but just as a kind of an overview of the projects that I'm gonna be going through tonight, the purple box at the north of Clear Creek, up near the border of Pearland, is the Friendswood Regional Stormwater Detention Basin. The blue area is Imperial Estates inline detention. There's a lighter blue area that's further south along Clear Creek. That's the Forest Bend Detention Pond, offline detention pond. And then the red and yellow area is the Wickham Property. I'm not gonna go into that one tonight, because we haven't really started efforts on that project. Then further south, the blue and green is the Black Hawk inline offline detention project. The orange, south of that, is Frenchman's Creek. The star is the utility relocation project. And then on Cowards Creek, the three purple areas, the three purple parcels are the three offline detention ponds along Castlewood.
I love that you're running out of colors. We have so many drainage projects going on. Every time you bring this chart, there's a new color up there with another project.
Okay. So Forest Bend was a Community Development Block Grant Project Disaster Recovery Funds from Hurricane Harvey. Oh, yeah. So this is a, was, or this is an aerial, it shows the before and after of the project. So you can see that there are several detention ponds that, or not several, but there's offline detention ponds that are meandering, and they feed into each other, and then there's a concrete trail system around with solar lighting. Next. So this project is almost done. The power was recently turned on out there. I think the bollard installation and startup is still scheduled here soon, and then the maintenance bond and the warranties. But really, this project is our first Community Development Block Grant Drainage Project that is wrapping up. So if you haven't been out there, you should go out and check it out. The Clear Creek Utility Rack Relocation, this is in between, this is along Clear Creek, in between the Terabella and Poly Ranch neighborhoods. So this one, we've kind of been in, well, not really limbo, because things have been moving behind the scenes, but we have, we finished the engineering a while ago, over a year ago, in fact, and the environmental assessment has really, there were archaeological sites in the area, so that took a lot longer than we were initially planning. But we recently submitted an extension for the, an extension, and the schedule is, like, we've really gone in and looked at things. So we're planning to complete the environmental by the end of this year, and then the construction should start shortly thereafter, as soon as we receive the authority to use grant funds. So hopefully, this summer, this project will be wrapping up. That's the plan. Frenchman's Creek Green Space, this was another community block development grant disaster recovery funds from Hurricane Harvey. This project is also nearing completion at this point. Buildings, so the city had a grant for Buildings 4 and 5, which were the two closest to the creek, and then Galveston County has an independent grant for the three buildings that are further from the creek, Buildings 1, 2, and 3. The demolition contract has already been procured, and work is going on out there this month. And then Galveston County should be, should be doing their demolition here shortly as well, too. So this project is also scheduled to complete by the end of the year. The Deepwood Acquisition Project. So this project, this project, Deepwood is a little complicated, because the acquisition portion was independent from the infrastructure portion. The acquisition portion is, it's, the properties that we're going to acquire have been set in stone at this point. There's eight properties that we're acquiring, and part of why the infrastructure project has kind of been on, well, it's just, it's taken a while, because we weren't 100% sure of where the acquisition project was gonna occur. So we couldn't really do the engineering for the project until we knew which properties we were going to acquire. So the demolition on this project is ongoing this month, and the acquisition portion is wrapping up.
Related to this, Mayor and Council, the properties located at the confluence of Cowards Creek and Clear Creek, where the old Public Works Facility used to be, the Drainage District has stepped up and acquired some of the properties that we were unable to acquire using grant funds. With the use of federal grant funds, there was a limitation to what we can pay for certain properties. So the Drainage District has stepped up, and hopefully with their efforts and ours, we can do a flood... we can do a flood mitigation project at that location.
So this slide shows the light green is the area where the infrastructure project is occurring. And I was going to go into that a little bit on the next slide, but the whole boot-shaped area, there are still a few properties within that yellow, the area outlined in yellow, that the property owner is wanting to stay there. But a large part of that area is likely going to become part of a terracing project that will be a combined effort with the city. And we are in the process of working on the inter-local agreement at this time. So the infrastructure project, so now we know where the project's going to occur. The original project was going to be a terracing project, but because the properties that we're acquiring are actually away from the creek, that won't really work anymore. And so at this point, we're doing a clearing project. And since we have an understanding with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District that we will be doing, you know, a combined or regional terracing project there. We're just trying to wrap up this grant and close it out and move forward at this point because it's taken a lot longer between the acquisition and the infrastructure project than we were hoping.
And the previous slide says, "Galveston County Drainage has a million and a half budgeted for flood control project", or it says, "Acquisition", it's the same million and a half, I assume, right?
So I...
You call it, on one slide it's called "budgeted for flood control", one is called "terracing".
Let me go, I'll go into the funding a little bit.
Well, I don't mean to drag this out.
The funding, so the acquisition, oh, is it, was it an error on the slide or...
So they set aside roughly the same amount of money for both.
So it's two different pots of a million and a half each?
Correct, but those are local dollars with the Drainage District, those are not CDBG dollars.
Understand.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Just trying to figure out if it's the same million and a half that we're sort of counting on two different slides, two different topics, okay, that's great.
So let me follow up then, since we're not going to be able to do the terracing because of the status of the property, what are, I'm a little confused, what are we doing?
So I'll go into that a little bit.
Oh, okay.
So the infrastructure grant was actually for two different projects. When we were awarded it, it was for the utility relocation grant and for Deepwood. So the scope at Deepwood is being reduced. We're just going to do a clearing project, but it actually works out well because the expected construction cost for the utility rack due to inflation and supply issues, since these were applied for, you know, originally three years ago, I guess, at this point. The costs have increased since the amount we originally applied for. So we think that it will likely, between reducing the scope on the Deepwood infrastructure project to a clearing project, and then the cost increases that are expected with the utility rack project, that the total grant award will be the same. It won't change. And I don't, I didn't write out the actual grant awards. The funding that is on here is like the funding that is expected for that project. So like the Deepwood... Yeah, the Deepwood, the Deepwood project was originally expected to come in at $2,959,825. And that's likely the acquisition and the infrastructure combined. But it's not going to end up costing that much, if that makes sense. When we reduce it to just a clearing project, it'll end up costing a lot less. But the utility rack is going to end up costing more than the 1.2 million we were expecting. It's probably going to be closer to 1.8. And the actual, the infrastructure grant, the community development block grant, I'm pretty sure I wrote it down on here, let me see, yeah, $2.69 million was what the grant was, the grant amount.
And just to add to that, due to no fault of the General Land Office, thank you Melissa for all that you've done. These are federally funded projects and efforts, and so there's a certain process that needs to be adhered to, and that's what took so long. And I've said this a million times and just, it's worth reiterating. We didn't get a grant in that we sought a project for that's now having cost overruns. The General Land Office said, based upon their method of distribution that they worked with HJAC on, said Friendswood gets X amount of dollars. So we went and sought projects that fit those dollars that were allocated to us. And when you do that, at times, you're trying to shoehorn a project into a certain specified amount. So had we been given dollars to just pursue these projects, we could have scoped it better, but we were trying to work backwards and obviously we were going to be limited with the funding we have available.
So I guess I'll, just so I have it straight in my head, it's basically at this point, at the Deepwood, just a clearing operation at this point to reduce water flow impedance and that sort of thing.
Right, it's just a conveyance project. By clearing it, it reduces the roughness of the land and so the water, yeah. So it has more capacity to hold water than if there's trees.
So is the Drainage District pursuing, purchasing some of this land and terracing it themselves or...
Yes, so the Drainage District has been pursuing purchasing land. I think they have purchased tracks in this area.
They've purchased one and there's another two that are under contract currently. After this, the Drainage District will still pursue terracing projects to the extent they can. It's just a matter of their availability with their operating budget. As they've shown in Quakers Landing and as they've shown in other areas, Mary's Creek and Clear Creek over off 2051. So it will be shelved at one, at some point in the future, it just depends on the availability of funds.
We're not able to do it now, thank you very much.
Yes, and we're working on the inter-local agreement now with the Engineering and Legal Department are working on that, so that will be laid out, yes. The three detention basins along Cowards Creek, these are going to be three offline detention ponds. One's at 2 Queens Lane, one's at 310 West Castlewood, and the other one's at 301 West Castlewood. You can go ahead and... So the first, the first of the three basins that they're building, they have, this is another aerial showing the before and after, but they are at 95% completion on the first basin. And they could have hydromulched it since I put this together, but hydromulching was the last 5% that was left on that project.
They did.
And they did that, yes.
Yes, okay. So the clearing on these started in June 22nd, and they are probably a little further than 15% on the second pond at this point. The Friendswood Regional Stormwater Detention Basin, this, so this slide kind of, it has a, well, it has a lot of information on it. This is a joint project with Galveston County, Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District, Harris County Flood Control District, and the City of Friendswood. Right now, and the next slide's going to go more into where we're at on it. But right now, we just completed the preliminary engineering report phase. So the first payment that is showed on here, we made that payment on 11/25/22, the $954,000, that was for the preliminary engineering report. The second payment is going to be due within 45 days of the first publication of the construction bid advertisement, and it's going to be a larger payment, a little over $7 million. So the full Friendswood share on this project is 8 million. The total expected cost of the detention pond is $32.4 million. So you can go ahead and switch it. So at this point, we've completed the preliminary engineering report. Out of that, there's one preferred alternative. And a public meeting date should be set here soon where the results of that preliminary engineering report will be overviewed to the public. And any comments will be accepted at that point as well. And when we get to that public meeting date, it's important to note that any public comments are going to be listened to and responded to. And when we get to the final engineering design, those comments will be considered. So another thing of note is that Galveston County is using ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds for their $7.5 million portion. And those funds have to be spent by a certain date. So in order to make sure that they, that those deadlines are being met, we have worked, you know, all the partners have worked together so that a smaller area of the detention pond will go ahead and start digging dirt so that those funds can be spent.
When are they planning to start that part of it, that we're spending Galveston County's part?
So the engineering has been completed. The Harris County Flood Control District went out for bid for construction on this project. And on November 14th, at Commissioner's Court, a contractor should be selected, so really soon, within the next couple of months.
Where's the smaller part of this in the big picture of the 1959 project? Is that too hard to explain or depict?
The short answer is it's going to be within the 100 acres that we have along the Clear Creek, but I don't know if we know off the top of our head just yet.
Where they're going to start first?
Yeah, so they submitted plans, I don't have the plans, like, I can't pull them up off the top of my head, but...
That's fine, I just know that there's been calls going around.
I didn't know if we should share those until we got the contractor on board and...
Right. I just know that there's been calls going around in regards to where the dirt's going and that sort of thing. And I was just wondering when they actually thought that they were going to start with the dirt.
Yes, sir. The dirt will be taken off-site though, that's excavated from the site. But yes, I don't know the, I don't recall the exact boundaries of that initial dig just yet.
Okay.
So this is a typo on this slide at the bottom, the estimated cost. The estimated cost is the same as the previous slide, the slide $32.4 million. So this project is going to take a number of years to complete. So there are some concerns that with inflation, the total cost of the project may be more. I know that Harris County Flood Control District has been looking into some additional alternatives to bring in a little additional funds for this project, but we haven't heard anything back at this time.
With all of it, obviously, we have a set amount of funding that we can provide since they are bond funds and the authorization limits are set. But we can always phase projects, as has been done in the past. Mud Gully ended up taking three phases, and if that's the case, we'll take multiple phases.
Next. So another large effort that, I guess things have kind of transitioned since the last time I talked, but we are planning to go out for bid as a joint effort with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District for a comprehensive master drainage plan. And it would look at both urban and riverine flooding. It would identify several alternatives. And in addition, it would also help with easement definitions for Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District. So we had gone out for bid for this, and then we received a phone call, "Hey, how would you like to get $661,500?" And so we were like, "Oh." But we, back in, back in 20, gosh, it's been at least two years. I can't, I think back in 2021, we had applied for funding, grant funds, for a master drainage plan or a comprehensive drainage plan. And that money came through at the last minute, literally before we awarded the contract. So we sent out cancellation letters, and now at this moment, FEMA is doing some final reviews on the grant application we had, but this is going to be more money for the master drainage plan, and we're expecting to rebid it in the spring of 2024. So it's great news.
Sam, that's really great news, because we had earmarked about $850,000 of it, Galveston County was going to pick up about 400, I believe.
Correct.
And now we're getting 661.5 in, that's huge. So I'm just really thankful for what all y'all are doing over there. That's really big for this whole plan and everything.
Yeah, it's really exciting.
Yes.
So this slide highlights some of the various grants that we've been awarded recently. The green is for the comprehensive drainage plan, I just mentioned that one. The funding is through the Texas Department of Emergency Management Pandemic Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. The local share is $12,500, and the federal share is going to be $661,500. Of course, in addition to that, we did have flood control bond funds identified. And Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District is also going to be a partner. We did sign an inter-local for $400,000, but of course, we'll probably revisit that and make sure they're still on board for partnering to that full amount. The second two, the red items, are through the Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program, and these are from Hurricane Harvey through the...
HJAC, Council of Governments, did a method of distribution on these funds. And Samantha has some slides further on to discuss these projects, but I will note, you received an email that the US Department of Housing and Urban Development is reevaluating, the state of Texas is, more specifically, the General Land Office's state action plan for these funds. The City of Houston filed a complaint that they didn't receive their fair share of funding for these projects. So there's a letter in your backup material. I don't need any action from you this evening, but just letting council know that the mayor will sign that letter and send it on to the Secretary of the Department of HUD. We got these projects because we were able to narrow down an area within the community that qualified for the low to moderate income threshold that these dollars had to be spent on. And we would hate to lose these nearly $4.6 million of project funds because Harris County and Houston feel they didn't get their fair share. So, and with that, I'll turn it back over to Samantha.
Yeah, like Murad said, the next two slides are going to go, give an overview of those. Oh, can you go back really quick?
Samantha, I have a question. Where are we at on that money that was earmarked by the state for Lower Clear Creek?
So, as you know, House Bill 1 was approved. Representative Bonin's office has been working with the Texas Water Development Board and Harris County Flood Control District. An announcement will come out in December on those funds. She mentioned earlier the Wickham property and the drainage project that's taking place there. There's an item later on this evening to discuss those efforts from a drainage perspective. But you will start seeing some movement, both of dirt and engineering, within the first quarter of 2024.
So the final one on here is an emergency portable generator, 100-kilowatt portable generator through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. This was from the Texas Severe Winter Storm Program. And it's $113,000 federal share and $12,500 local share.
Well, well done on that, by the way. That's a great way to leverage applying for and getting all these grants and leveraging everything we provide here in support from our taxpayers, thank you.
Well, it's taken a lot of teamwork, so lots of very intelligent and diligent employees working together to get that done. The Annalea Neighborhood Improvements Project, this is a street water utility and storm drainage infrastructure project. This project, there are actually a few homes in here that are repetitive loss structures, which means that they've flooded numerous times during storm events. This project meets the criteria of being over 51% low to moderate income. We actually went out and surveyed this area and to guarantee that we were finding a project that would meet that low to moderate income threshold for the grant program. The, so it's 1,300 linear feet of street reconstruction, 1,100 feet of upsized water utilities, and then 1,350 feet of upsized storm sewer that would meet the new design criteria, Manuel's Atlas 14 rainfall. And the project, it's expected to take about a year for design and a year for construction. And it will reduce street flooding. And we have a, we have a couple people in this area that are constantly calling worried about flooding. So this would be a really great project to get done. And then the other mitigation grant project is the groundwater storage tank at Groundwater Plant 4. This project was recently identified in our capital improvement plans. It's a new 1 million gallon ground storage tank facility at the Groundwater Plant 4. And it would increase the storage... Uh, and it would increase the storage available to meet peak demands. Uh, it also would take about a year for engineering and a year for construction. And the project would include the new one million gallon tank, all supporting piping, electrical, site grading, and safety systems. And the, the areas outlined in red shows the service area for the, uh, the water plant.
And the benefit to the project, obviously, to the nearby community is that we'd be able to improve water pressures on the southern reaches of our community.
Um, and then the, the last project that I'm talking about this evening is the Quakers Landing Terracing Project. The Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District and the city of Friendswood, um, have drafted an interlocal agreement, which is on the agenda this evening for this project. The area outlined in red shows, um, the area where the, the terracing project will take place. And I actually, this was, the, the area outlined in red is what was submitted for, um, they're looking at relocating the, the center point gas lines. But this other image to, up above that has lots of blue parcels and, and the purple parcel, those, the blue and purple parcels are parcels that are owned by the city or the drainage district. So there's room for them to terrace all the way to the creek in that area. Um, yeah, so these are city buyout properties to terrace. There's no cost to the city, just donating use of the property. And then Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District will be doing the in- infrastructure work.
So all the blue property is owned by the city at this point?
Yes, sir. We acquired it in, uh, after Tropical Storm Allison, as well as Hurricane Harvey.
That, that one parcel that's between the purple and the blue, I thought that we got that piece of property. I think that's where the people call the pond.
Uh, we can double check, um.
We may have, uh, I'll go back and double check. I know some of our, um, we, we haven't, yeah, we haven't double checked our buyout.
Okay, cuz I, I think, I think we have.
The only, um, hole that we have along that area is on Haverford, the very last street along the creek, so.
Cuz I remember that, that was a holdout, and, uh, that's where the pond is, and, and I think we got that.
I think I'm recalling that as well. Okay. The final slide. Um, so questions? The top image is apple blossom during Harvey, and the bottom image was, um, my, um, former stepdaughter and her friend playing in the street during Harvey over in Seabrook, so.
All right. Well, thanks Samantha. Any more questions from anybody? Appreciate you.
I just want to comment that you are doing a great job, and it's, it's really gratifying to see how this plan is all coming together.
Yes. So. People in the room here that are, are looking to develop in Friendswood should, you know, feel pretty good that we got a lot of great drainage projects going on here, and we are, uh, we are making this, uh, city more resilient all the time. So good place to be, good time to be here. So moving on to item eight, Friendswood City Center Development, eight A, it is six forty-three P M. At the hour right. Switched it. And I now call to order this public hearing regarding the amendment to the Future Land Use Map twenty twenty-one to change the designation of a hundred and six point four seven two acres located at thirty-eight oh one F M five twenty-eight Road, Friendswood, Harris County, Texas, from public and semi-public and retail to mixed use. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to express their views regarding an amendment to the Future Land Use Map to change the designation of a hundred and six point four seven two acres from public and semi-public and retail to mixed use. Everyone desiring to be a part of this hearing should have signed the list in the foyer. Each participant shall give his, her name and address in order to provide a proper record of this hearing. No one signed up? Okay. Aubrey Harvard, give us some, uh, background on this.
Good evening. This one will be short and sweet. Um, it's kind of a precursor to the next public hearing item. Um, so are it, we're just trying to keep our future land use map updated and current. Um, so when we did the, uh, future land use map in twenty twenty-one, um, we, the existing P U D, this is what it allowed. Um, so with the next request, we're requesting to change this to mixed use. Um, from the, the blue is public and semi-public with the churches and schools and city-owned properties, and the red is planned for retail. So that's the public hearing portion of that.
All right, there being no one desiring to speak on this item, I now close this public hearing regarding amendment to the Future Land Use Map twenty twenty-one. Item eight B, it is now six forty-five P M. And I now call to order this public hearing, a request for a zone clarification change concerning one hundred and six point four seven two acres of land located at thirty-eight oh one F M five twenty-eight Road, Friendswood, Harris County, Texas, to change the zoning district designation from planned unit development ordinance twenty fifteen dash eighteen to a revised planned unit development to allow a mixed use development. This public hearing being held for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to express their views. Do we have anyone here to speak? Aubrey, you want to talk about this one?
Yes, sir. Um, so I'm going to take a minute to explain this project, and this is a big one. Um, and so it's got a lot of details, so I'll cover it as quickly as possible. Um, but the property identified on the map is, uh, big, going to be a revised, uh, planned unit development. Um, so the Friendswood City Center is what this project would be known as. Uh, it'll be a mixed use development combining commercial, retail, hospitality, office, civic municipal mixed use buildings, and multifamily residential recreation opens, uh, open space uh, to create a vibrant, walkable neighborhood. All areas of this community would be connected with ten-foot shared use paths for cycling and walking. The extension of Black Hawk Boulevard from five twenty-eight to Bay Area Boulevard is proposed as part of this project, which will provide additional routes of travel and frontages for additional commercial buildings. Uh, traffic signals will be added to Towns Road and Black Hawk Boulevard, so we have, um, four-way signalized intersections at those two major streets, um, which if anybody remembers the T I A from when Clear Creek Community Church went in, ultimately, that was the requirement. Um, they weren't required to do that at the time because, um, the density of their development didn't warrant that at, at the time. But this project will include, um, fully signalized intersections there. And there will be an additional entrance between Towns and Black Hawk into the development. Um, ample parking will be provided throughout the development in the form of parking lots and parking garages. At least twenty percent of the parking spaces in all the garages will be required to remain as public parking. There may be a fee for those spaces. All surface parking area, or surface parking areas, except the gated area of the multifamily residential development will be designated as public parking. Um, they've also accounted for overflow parking for Clear Creek Community Church, um, as part of this. The P U D will comply with the community overlay district requirements as required by the zoning ordinance. Um, we use the C S C zoning and multifamily, uh, zoning districts as guide for the development. Any devi- deviations to the requirements of these zoning districts are written in the P U D and included in the regulation matrix. A variety of uses will provide entertainment, dining, and neighborhood services to those living in the community and in Friendswood. Uh, multi-story office buildings will serve as small employment center to increase the number of people to support the development on a daily basis. A hotel will provide accommodation to other, to allow others to stay within the property and enjoy the amenities it has to offer. The permitted use table is included in the P U D and, um, defines the uses allowed on this property. Um, we went through the, uh, the existing uses that are allowed in C S C and kind of, um, includes most of those uses. Um, the one, gas stations would all, will only be allowed on Lot Five, which is a corner lot at the future Black Hawk um, and five twenty-eight intersection. Recreational areas are included in the proposal as well, so almost five miles of trails will be included throughout the development. Um, some of it's sidewalks, some of it's gravel trails. Um, a lake will be constructed to serve as not only detention for the development and regional flood mitigation along Clear Creek, but also as re- recreation for non-motorized watercrafts such as canoes and kayaks. The lake will be accessible by the public, uh, from the new Black Hawk Boulevard extension, and parking will be provided for that as well. The lake, um, will be deeded to the city, and so it will be parkland, um, added to our acreage on the Harris County side. This is the third major proposal for a P U D on this tract. Pre- previous versions have included similar mix of uses, including retail and office, as well as five to six hundred residential units. In two thousand fifteen, the residential units were removed from the P U D, um, by council at the time the ordinance was approved. The density of the development and its proximity to any nearby residential properties requires residential use within the development to support the businesses that are going to go in there. The Planning and Zoning Commission had their public hearing on Thursday, October twelfth. Um, and then they ended up tabling it to give it some more consideration. So on October twenty-sixth, they voted unanimously in favor of the project. We did have three, um, mo- items on our motion, which the regulation matrix was amended somewhat. The building heights were originally ninety feet for all of the, uh, buildings. They renewed, reduced it, so lots one through six along five twenty-eight will be a forty-foot maximum height, and all the other buildings are going to be a seventy-foot maximum height. Um.
We have slides to go along with everything you've just told council.
Just before you run, run up there on that.
Sorry.
In the, in the, in the picture, I, I mean, the, the map be- before this, where we had the blue, that was the community church pud, I believe, the blue, you see the blue?
The P U D before was on the whole property.
The P U D, well, now it, it looks to me like it's all yellow. So the entire track, including the church property, is, is part of this pud?
No.
Okay, just, just outlined in red, the one oh six. So why do we color the church lot yellow too?
That's the previous P U D. It's still remaining. We've, um, we've reached out to them, and we're trying to get them to do a zone, they're going to have to change their zoning as well. And then they're, and do a new P U D for their property. They just haven't submitted the application.
Okay, so this is strictly the one oh six?
Yes.
Excluding the thirty-nine acres that was part of the church?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Sorry, I forgot that these, no, 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 I, I was thinking those zone change pictures were there, and I forgot I put the other ones in there, so I apologize. Uh, this is the site plan and layout of the project. It has all those little details. Um, so, let's see. No, it's okay. Uh, so seventy-foot max height. We also did clarify that, um, some of the blue mixed use prop, prop, uh, buildings um, could potentially have some residential component to them. Um, we did clarify that, um, all the density of all the multifamily will not exceed twenty-nine units per acre. Um, and then if the mixed use buildings end up having residential, it would be on the second floor and up only, similar to downtown district. Um, so we did make that clarification as well. Um.
How many rooms is the hotel?
Um.
I think a hundred and fifty or less, but, uh.
Okay, we have people that can answer those questions tonight. I'll let them handle that. Um, C D C also gave unanimous supportive recommendation, um, at their meeting on October fourth. Um, and I think that's all I have. And that's just a three-D image, so you can kind of see the Black Hawk extension going through and the, how the buildings will be laid out. I'll leave that slide up there.
So, do you have somebody that can speak to the question, Councilmember Aaron Ward asked about the number of?
Applicants here, so, yeah.
Maybe they have a presentation.
Good evening. My name is Phil Wolfgram. I'm the C E O of Wolfgram Capital, who will build and own the hotel. Um, so the hotel maximum has a hundred and fifty rooms, but that will depend on how big of a mini space that we will build. Approximately five thousand square feet of mini space, so it'll flux between probably one twenty, one fifty, depending on the man that we think will, will come to the city.
Appreciate it, Mr. Wolfgram. All right, there being no one desiring to speak on this item, I now close this public hearing. Onto item eight C. Consider an ordinance amending the Future Land Use Map twenty twenty-one to change the designation of a hundred and six point four seven two acres of land located at thirty-eight oh one F M five twenty-eight Road, Friendswood, Harris County, Texas, from public and semi-public and retail to mixed use, and amending the official zoning map to change the zoning district of such property from planned unit development ordinance twenty fifteen dash eighteen to a revised pub, planned unit development to allow a mixed use development. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
A motion and a second. Councilmember Branson, Councilmember Matranga. Um, is there more information that we, we don't need any more information? Anybody have any questions on this now?
Mayor.
Councilmember Rock.
I'm not sure this is the right part of this, and, um, but there is a very small historic cemetery on the property. Uh, and I have talked to Louis, and he's committed that that's going to be maintained, uh, and maybe even be, you know, sort of a nice, nice thing to have.
All of our engineering designs are to keep that exact same level it is now, and that will be historically marked as well, and we'll have public access to that.
Awesome. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Thanos.
Oh, I, I have several questions, but.
Okay.
Mayor's okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, I, and thank you, cuz I really like this project. That's been an empty, empty spot along five twenty-eight, and I'm really hoping that, that it goes forward, and it, you know, definitely helps that area continue to grow. So I'm excited about what you guys are, are trying to do. I do have a couple just detailed questions, just trying to understand. Um, one is, and I'll, I'm going to direct it first, just to make sure I understand to, to Murad, city manager. Now, this will be the last time, as far as the development goes itself, just the layout of the streets, the layout of the buildings. This will be the last time council sees it, but planning and zoning will see the site plan. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. As different parcels within the, the project get developed, the Planning and Zoning Commission will see it again. But city council, this is your last opportunity to discuss the zoning. You do have several opportunities to discuss any financing mechanisms associated with this project.
Right, and, and I, my questions are more just layout, not, not so much the zoning, but I understand completely the zoning, and that makes sense. So one of my biggest concerns is the phasing. There's three phases to this project that are listed. And I, and they're, you know, infrastructure phase one, some of the retail phase one. Uh, and then phase two, I believe, is some of the mixed use, and some of the parkland, I believe. And then phase three is, uh, some of the multifamily residential units. I mean, and Joe, I've glossed over details, but, uh, you know, I think I got it close enough, right? My concern is, based on the P U D that was presented, once the phase one and the infrastructure gets started, then actually you could start phase three. I'm just concerned that we're going to end up, a- and I just want to make sure, hear your thoughts on how you're going to develop this. Uh, as to, could we end up with, is there a concern at all, should we be concerned at all about some of the infrastructure getting done? And then high-density apartments being there, and then we don't go forward with the mixed use? We don't go forward with the hotel? We don't go forward, uh, with some of the retail? That's my concern.
Well, the first thing to understand is every parcel in this project is spoken for, and that each one is with individual development partners. So as I don't control every aspect of the development, development as a whole, each one of these development partners and each individual parcel is pretty much ready to go now. So phase one, of course, being drainage, the most important thing, because we have to fill in the existing detention pond that the church has and build the three-tiered system in the lake. Also, public infrastructure, we can't build anything without roads, of course, and can't get a permit if you can't drive to it. So the retail will be first to go because it's right there on the road, and we have the utilities available. So the second I have paving in that area, those are slated to go right away. All those closings are scheduled, all that stuff is in plans already, all ready to build. So I can speak to that. I don't believe the hotel is slated right away. I think this, that's later on, as we get some more of the things in place. The retail's, you know, first building to go. Multifamily is going to take quite a while to get going.
Okay.
It's at least a year or so of plans.
Okay. Uh, and I, I went out to the Pearland Town Center off of two eighty-eight, which is, was quite a different property, but in some respects is, is similar in nature to what you're laying out here. Uh, they've got a common pavilion kind of in the middle of that. Is that, I did not see something like that here, but I wanted to ask you, is that part of your plans to have sort of a, a central gathering spot? Theirs is covered. I don't, I don't know. So I'm asking, I just didn't notice that on the plans.
In the hotel site, one of the things that we, we stated that we had to have was a convention space or wedding reception space or something for the residents, because we have nothing like. like that here. We planned an outdoor green space area that is cornered to that hotel site, which I believe we're still planning on keeping that open in green space like that. We have lots of walkable kiosk type places, the middle, the roundabouts. The park is the main focal point for for gathering. It's fifty-two-acre park, like like Aubrey said, five miles of trails, fishing lake. We have a pier, a bulkhead with a boardwalk in the back. So that's kind of the the main gathering point.
Okay, so so as part of the hotel, you've got some exterior green space.
Yes.
Is that what I understood?
Yes, and all of the retails, you can see, they all have sort of patios and green spaces to the sides. They're all kind of designed that way.
But no dedicated gathering spot in the middle of it is part of this plan?
Yes.
At this, there's not one of those?
No, 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 no.
At this point?
Not like a pavilion, no.
Okay, okay. Thank you again. I I I think that'll, this should really help revitalize that area. I just wanted to get a couple of questions. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Any question? Councilmember Rocky.
Louis, what's the value of this development going to be when it's all done?
Upon completion, we're looking in excess of seven hundred million dollars in total investment within the city. That's including infrastructure, of course, flood mitigation and and building.
Thank you.
The park will be surrendered to the city as soon as we're done with the improvements of that, so that's improvements to the park as well.
I got a, I got a question. How vital is a hundred and fifty-room hotel to this project?
How vital is it?
Yeah.
The whole project, over a year, was designed and to have every aspect needed for the community. The hotel is a very important part to this, because we're trying to attract a lot of national branded tenants for the MOB as well as retail. So medical office buildings, the first thing they ask for is a hotel. And the hotel, of course, what they want is medical office buildings and the company, you know, things like that. So they all go together. And, you know, the multifamily is also hugely important, because it supports the national-type boutique grocery or food store or something like, we might want to come to the mixed-use buildings. Everything in this project is designed with the best aspects of projects surrounding the city. The park, Memorial Park in Houston, the M O Bs with the hotel woodlands and the and I-ten city center. So everything I could think of to draw from the best parts around Houston, we tried to encompass them in one development. So we don't want anyone to have to go anywhere else.
I guess, I guess my biggest concern being in the hospitality industry is, you know, the occupancy rate on a hundred and fifty-room hotel Monday through Friday over there, and then what happens if that hotel's not, you know, not say that I make it into meet, but does that become a vacant building? Or what happens if if that? I I get the meeting space we need. I just worry about the demand for a hundred and fifty-room hotel in this city.
Well, we looked at the development going at forty-five in the Nassau one area. There's about one point one billion dollars' worth of entertainment going in that area. The Wolfgram Lodge, as you know, Gray Wolf Lodge, excuse me. Too many wolves in my life.
He's gonna buy it.
Yeah, so you've got the Gray Wolf Lodge going there with the hotel projected to satisfy thirty percent of their guests. I mean, that was a big part of attracting a hotel to this property, and this is another reason that we we targeted this property, because all that activity going on forty-five.
Yeah, and I get.
There's just not enough room for everybody to go around.
I get the seasonal. I just worry about the Monday through through Friday over there, in the business sense of it is what kind of worries me.
Mr. Wolfgram.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we're also worried about that, too. And so the room count, like I mentioned before, the room count will fluctuate. It may be one fifty, could be low, depending on what we think the demand will be during the week. I think on the weekends, we'll have no problems, because people will come and have meetings and.
No, I definitely see the use for it. I just, it sounds like a lot of rooms, in my opinion, for our city. I mean, it seems like more of a boutiquey hotel city.
Yeah, definitely will not be one of your Hollywood Express. We have, we own the Springfield Suites in Webster. It's a hundred and twenty rooms.
Yeah.
It fills up every weekend, every day, really. It won't be one of those. It'll be more of a lifestyle-type brand, upper-scale.
Like a Zaza, like a Hotel Zaza?
Yeah, like a Marriott Tribute, that we will name it, something that fits Friendswood, but something along those lines, Tapestry, Akira, that's lifestyle brand. It won't be a your typical low-end brand.
Okay, appreciate it.
I just have a quick question. I've seen developers come for P and Z, and I've noticed that P and Z is does a wonderful job about telling a developer or advising a developer what they can do, especially under the rules and regulations of the ordinances and the design criteria manual. But I've never heard P and Z tell a developer how to do it and how to phase it. That's, that's a first for me in the five years that I've been here. Uh, I can see the concern about maybe doing multifamily and not doing any of the commercial, but you say that the commercial is already spoken for in the front along five twenty-eight.
Every single parcel on the site plan is spoken for, yes.
Yeah, I just, I'm, 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 I can understand the concern, but I just don't see how, or I believe it's an overreach for P and Z to go beyond what you can do in an ordinance and a design criteria manual, and then tell you how to develop it. That's just an overreach in my mind. And I I think the the plan looks wonderful. I'm going to have more questions when we have the TERS and the PID discussion than than what I see as far as being designed here, and what P and Z's worked on has been a wonderful, wonderful example of of you working with P and Z on what just really is an incredible piece of property. It can be. I'm looking forward to seeing it.
You know, we aimed to please.
Yeah. I'm gonna have to figure out the PID and the TERS and what you're actually going to need there. And I think that as far as financing is concerned and timing is concerned, there might be more lever levers to pull there than a design criteria and a ordinance. And that might maybe something, if you want to pull a lever, pull it with the financing. But, okay, that was all I wanted to say.
All right.
May I just add? I think this is really going to be an asset for Friendswood, so I appreciate you bringing this to our community, because I think it's going to be a crown jewel for us. So thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Passes six to nothing.
I think that's the third time I've gotten to vote on the owner of this property since I've been up here.
And the TERS.
Third time's a charm, Councilmember Rocky.
Get out of here before I have to do it again.
All right, item eight D. Consider a resolution setting a public hearing on the creation of the tax increment reinvestment zone and its benefits to the city and to the property in the proposed zone and directing a preliminary reinvestment zone project and financing plan be prepared. Do I have a motion on this?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Councilmember Rocky, Councilmember Branson.
Just a few comments, Mayor and Council. We touched upon it a little bit earlier this evening. There is a financing component associated with this project. We're not going to go into too much detail about it this evening. Simply, we're going to call a public heating, a public hearing at a future council meeting. But for your benefit, a tax increment financing or a tax increment reinvestment zone is a zone that's created to establish a baseline tax revenue only off the property within the boundaries of that district. It doesn't take into account any properties that are outside that district. Once that baseline is established, the incremental value that's created above and beyond that baseline value is set aside to 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 support public infrastructure projects and improvements. So all this stuff you saw earlier this evening associated with the zoning, the roadways, the extension of Black Hawk, the drainage improvements, the the fire station, so on and so forth, are going to be funded with this district as well as the public improvement district. So those incremental revenues are set aside to support the infrastructure costs associated with it. On the right-hand side of the screen are the next steps following this evening's calling for the public hearing. So there will be a public hearing and directing the preliminary project plan and financing plan to be prepared by staff in conjunction with the consultants that y'all hired previously. We will publish notice of that public hearing and hold public hearings related to those plans. And then at a subsequent council meeting in two thousand and twenty-four, you will have ordinances to create the tax increment reinvestment zone, describing the boundaries, create the Board of Directors, who can be the City Council, and establishing the tax increment fund that will be utilized to support the public infrastructure during the financing of those projects.
Mo, I have a quick question. We're calling for a public hearing, but we have not had the preliminary reinvestment zone financing plan prepared yet. Could, shouldn't we do the refine refinancing plan first and then call a public hearing so that they would know what we're talking about?
So you have to do both in conjunction. So by calling the public hearing, you're you're directing staff to prepare the public financing plan associated with it. The chapter three seventy-two of the Texas Local Government Code establishes or prescribes the process we must follow in order to create these districts.
Okay. And in creating that zone, we have to describe the the boundaries.
Correct, and so you have a meets and bounds of the backup material, and that's this map.
Yeah, I have the meets and bounds, and we're looking at a hundred and six point something, hundred, call it a hundred and seven acres, which was the pud, and the meets and bounds description for the TERS is a hundred and twenty-four acres, I believe.
So the difference is.
Looking at the differences crossing a independent school district for the road?
So the extension of the roadway, and it's not just crossing CCSD's property. A portion of this project takes the back triangle, for lack of a better term, of CCSD's property to replace their current detention pond with a larger pond that serves both our facility and their facility, allowing the district, the CCSD, to utilize more of its property, and will provide parking spaces for the park as well as amenities associated with the park, so.
Okay, then let me ask you this question real quick. The school district is a tax-exempt organization from ad lib loan taxes. How are, under a TERS, would we do an incremental assessment to an independent school district and have them pay a, an assessment if they're tax-exempt from taxes? They're not tax-exempt from a TERS?
They're they're tax-exempt from a TERS, but they're not going to pay into it. So their baseline is zero, and then once this project's completed, their new tax increment's going to still be zero, because it's a public entity.
Okay, so how do we reimburse for our assessments when they're an incremental part of the TERS?
So the totality of the project sets aside the increment that's created, so the remainder of the hundred and six acres is going to support that.
That's what I'm saying. Their part, they're going to be, they're going to be, or or third-party builder, is going to be assessed an incrementally greater portion to cover the revenue that's going to be needed under the TERS for that development of that corner.
So the entire value that's placed on the ground that's taxable is all the non-public property. So the detention pond that they're building for us, the parkland that they're building for us are all tax-exempt. So the commercial properties, the mixed-use properties, the multifamily is what's going to support all this infrastructure. And they have to be within the boundaries of the TERS, otherwise those public improvements can't be built.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna knock this off, because it sounds like we're discussing the TERS, not setting a date.
I'm discussing the boundaries, which was in the back of the property, which is different from the pud.
Okay, it sounds like we're 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 crossing a boundary there, I think, in my mind, so I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Six to nothing, this passes. Item eight E. Consider a resolution accepting the Friendswood City Center Public Improvement District petition concerning a hundred and six point four seven two acres located at thirty-eight oh one FM five twenty-eight Friendswood, Harris County, Texas, and calling a public hearing on the advisability of the proposed improvements. Can I get a motion? Motion and a second. Councilmember Rocky, Councilmember Aaron Ward. Any further discussion on this, Marad?
So.
What to provide?
I have a similar question in that that was said a hundred and six, seven, or a hundred and seven acres, and this pit also describes a hundred and twenty-four acres.
So the hundred and six acres are going to be the developed lands that are going to be privately owned once this project's complete and all the public infrastructure's in place. So the reason is, the the delta that's not going to be privately held are exempt from paying into the.
Okay, and what was discussed at planning and zoning was a two-hundred lot, parking lot, that was going to be constructed by this development on church land, which is exempt from ad lib loan taxes. Is there any possibility that PID dollars or TERS dollars would go to pay?
No, sir.
Not the infrastructure dollars, but but PID, any of it would go towards the two-hundred lots that are going to be constructed on exempt ad lib loan property?
Those aren't public properties. They will, they wouldn't, it's not a public project.
So so that's not going to be funded in any way under the PID or the TERS?
Correct.
All right.
So similar to the last discussion, the the screen shows the next steps associated with this process. And again, both with the TERS and the PID, you're only talking about revenue generated from this property. No tax dollars anywhere else in the community are going to support this project. And in fact, an increment of the funding that's created will support our maintenance and operation obligations from this site, will support those services on this site.
That's what I needed to know, Mo. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Got a motion and a second on accepting this PID petition. All in favor? Six, nothing, passes. Item nine, City Managers Report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. First off, I would like to announce, and there will be an official announcement that goes out later this month, but the City of Friendswood was recently recognized by the Houston Chronicle as one of the top workplaces in the Houston metro area. And why this is an accolade that I like to tout is the the numbers speak for themselves. So over a hundred and seventeen thousand surveys were completed across the Houston metro area from fifty-three hundred organization and employers. Of those fifty-three hundred employers, only two hundred were selected as a top workplace within the Houston metro area. And these are all based on anonymous surveys that were completed by employees within the organization, and no, I did not fill out every employee's survey. But it is a tribute to the leadership of this City Council and for the resources and support you give us that folks like to work in this community, and I thank you for that, and I I applaud the the forefathers and foremothers of this organization that have made us who we are. There's a lot of information on that screen, and one item that I failed to to include on that was the the efforts of the Friendswood Historical Society that are going to kick off a lot of the celebrations that you're going to experience in the coming days. But before I get to that, and I apologize, we can skipped over the stuff associated with November. So Veterans Day was mentioned earlier today. There will be a, an event at the Senior Activity Building on November ninth. Blue Santa softball tournament will start on November eighteenth. Again, this is an effort by our PD and Parks Department to raise funding and get toys donated for folks, needy families in the community. The Christmas Ferry Hunt in Stevenson Park begins on November twentieth. It's a fun activity within Stevenson Park. There will be a Thanksgiving potluck at the Senior Center for those interested in attending on November twenty-first. December second will be the flapjack fun run, which you, participants get to do a five K throughout our community, and at the end of it, I don't know if they're serving flapjacks this time, or if it's, oh, it's flapjacks, I'm sorry. One of these years, we're going to eat the flapjacks first and then go for a run and see who finishes. And then Santa in the park on December second as well, holiday, holidays in the park on December fifteenth, and December twentieth, breakfast with Santa at the Senior Center. December fifth, the Historical Society will be holding their annual tree lighting ceremony at the Frank J. Brown Museum off of Skyview. There will be gingerbread and wassel will be served to folks that want to attend, followed by carols led by the Friends Church Children's Choir, which is always a delight to hear Christmas carols this time of year, and an outdoor tree lighting, so, and Santa, I hear, will be there as well. We will put out more information on those activities later this month. And then activities at the Friendswood Library, December first through the thirteenth, there will be a Christmas card drive for Hope Village. I know the mayor mentioned it earlier today about the Hope Village event that took place last week, the fashion show. Any efforts or support that folks in the community can give to that Hope Village is much appreciated, so please drop off cards for the residents there. December first, Santa in the library. He's very busy, obviously, this time of year, followed as well by a holiday book sale at the library from December first and December second. December fifteenth is the stuffed animal sleepover drop-off at the library. Again, this is not for individuals to sleep over, but if you want your stuffed animal to spend the night at the library, they will allow you to drop it off, and they will have a fun night, I imagine. It's much like night at the museum. Whenever light goes off, the animals come to life. And then after the first of the year, January fifth through the seventh is our annual Comic Con event that's known as Zackon Con. If you haven't attended, I would encourage council to attend. It's a, an event that's pretty well attended by folks in the community, and that's my City Manager's report.
Let me just ask a quick question. Let me just ask a quick question.
Yes, sir.
I think last Friday, or maybe today, we received an email about readings the night before Christmas at the library. When is that?
We're going to put that on your calendar, sir.
Okay, then.
I'm confirming with the library to make sure.
I just noticed it wasn't up there, but yeah.
Yes, sir, we're finishing up that with Ms. Christina in the library, and as soon as I have confirmation, I'll send that out to those that want to participate.
Great, and that was my mistake, but there will be cookies there as well, as we listen to y'all read a night before Christmas.
That is why you're the top workplace.
Yes.
Cookies.
All right, business items, 10A, consider authorizing inter-local agreement with Galveston County Consolidated Drainage District for the Quaker Landing Drainage Improvement Project. Do I have a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, we kind of heard about this from Samantha, do you have any questions for Hill? All in favor? Six to nothing. 10B, consider authorizing the joint participation inter-local agreement with Harris County for the Black Hawk Boulevard 2C reconstruction project, do I have a motion on this?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions for Hill on this, all in favor?
This is really good.
Yes, we're getting this project done.
That's awesome.
10C, consider the approving change order number two between the Friendswood Downtown Economic Development Corporation and Pfeiffer &amp; Sons Limited for the FM 518 Illumination Project, subject to the approval of the Board of Directors of Friendswood Downtown Economic Development Corporation.
Motion to approve.
Second. Can't believe you did that.
All in favor? All right, six to nothing, that passes.
Great job, Hill, on the presentations.
Good job, Hill.
Man, a few words.
Yeah. Item 11, proposed resolutions and ordinances, 11A, consider on final reading an ordinance amending Chapter 30, Fire Protection and Prevention, Article 2, Fire Marshal, Section 30-21, Office-Created Appointment of the Friendswood City Code to rename such section as "Office-Created" and to reflect that such office is within the Emergency Services Department. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All in favor? 11B, consider on final reading an ordinance amending Appendix D, Schedule of Fees, Rates, Charges, Deposits, Bonds, and Insurance Amounts of the Friendswood City Code to update the Earthwork Permit Fees, to establish Flood Plane Development Permit Fees and Site Work Permit Fees, and Dakota Codify Fees for Temporary Street Banners. Do I have a motion on this?
Second.
Motion and a second, second reading, all in favor. Approved. Item 11C, consider an ordinance renaming Harold Whittaker Drive to Whittaker Drive.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor. 11D, consider a resolution repealing Resolution Number 2023-23 in its entirety and setting a new time, date, and place for a public hearing to discuss and review the proposed updated land use assumptions, capital improvements planned, and the imposition of impact fees. Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed.
I'm hoping for it.
Little slow there.
Well.
All right. Motion passes six to nothing.
I haven't seen the dollars.
All right, I think I'm on 11E, correct?
Yes.
Consider a resolution authorizing the city's membership in a coalition named Cities Served by Centerpoint Gas for the purpose of protecting the interests of the city and its citizens with respect to gas utility matters, and suspending the effective date of the Statement of Intent of Centerpoint Energy Resources Corp., DBA Centerpoint Energy Intex, and Centerpoint Energy Texas Gas, to charge rates in the Texas Division to permit the city, to permit the city time to study and request, and ultimately to establish reasonable rates.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor. Six to nothing. Item 12, consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second, all in favor. And adjournment, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, let's go. Thank you all.